All right, we'll call the meeting to order. At six thirty-six, uh, will the secretary take the roll?
Suzanne, could you take the roll?
I looked up as I was saying.
Trusty Gun Guling.
Here.
Trusty Fuss.
Here.
Trusty Chuck for birthday.
Here.
Justy.
Oh, help me. Here.
She be here.
Oh, help me, please.
I'm here.
Like a all discombobulated.
Trust me, Ruth, yes. Trusty Rogers and your trusty Fairfax is near.
I think.
Kind of.
We will, uh, approval of minutes for our October meeting, uh, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Yes.
You want the second, is there any discussion or questions? There are none, all those in favor say aye. Those say nay. They are approved. Um, for comments, I did not receive anything uh, for this meeting. Uh, via the form or an email. Uh, not just that you did not either, okay? Moving on to new business uh, policies.
So first of all, we have personal leave policy. You've probably watched the news of there's been some changes like statewide, so I'm glad we met us. They start on January one, so. I'm gonna ask for don't need to kind of give highlights of it, so you follow where.
Yeah, so um, the paid leave for all workers act. Um, goes into effect on January one. Um, which if you haven't heard of the paid leave for all workers act, it's the um, act for Illinois that was. Signed this summer by Pritzker goes into effect on January one that guarantees. Um, one hour of paid leave. For every forty hours worked. Up to a maximum of forty hours. So. And this leave, once it's awarded, can be taken for any reason. There's no limitations on it. So, um, is our um, attorney's opinion that um, the paid leave for all workers act does apply to the library? Um, and we have an easy way, simple way, it's in front of you tonight, to comply with this policy, or comply with the. What we're gonna do is we're going to um, add a personal leave policy, kind of think of it like personal days. So we're gonna add the forty hours of personal, personal leave. And we're gonna sunset, we're going to remove our floating holidays, um, our four, our thirty, thirty-two hours of floating holiday time. That's what's important. So we're adding essentially five days and subtracting four days. For full-time employees. So. Yeah, in order to, in order to be compliant, in order to like not like, because right now, um, not, we don't have one single policy, we have. Vacation time, we have health leave, and then floating holiday time. None of them are compliant by themselves. So. Um, because they have to be applied to all employees. All employees include our floaters, our interns, our seasonal employees. Right now, our time off policies wouldn't apply to them. This personally policy does apply, we would have awarded them some time out of the year.
So just, sorry to clarify, so it says. For every forty hours worked, so if you're a twenty-hour employee, that would mean work two weeks with this hour, yes?
Yes, but, but the way it works for us is all of our policies are also front-loading policies, a front-loading policy is when all of our hours are awarded. Yeah, are, are awarded for us, it's only gonna be on January one, and this is what happens with floating holidays now, and with our health leave and our vacation, it all loads in on January one. Employees are gonna, they're waiting for January one to get here, so all their vacation bound, and then back, so they plan to use it to rest of the day. Um, so we anticipate, like, if you're scheduled for twenty hours a week, then we would assume. That uh, in fifty-two weeks a year, we're gonna front-load, the equation works out, to twenty-six hours of leave to, to be able to use throughout the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's basically adding twelve hours a year to a forty-hour week?
Um. No, for, because of the cap, because of the cap um, of forty hours. It's adding eight hours, eight hours to a um, full-time employee, so a full-time employee currently has thirty-two hours of floating holiday time to use. Um, and that will be replaced by personal, personal leave. Personal days, that can be, um, that'd be forty hours, so thirty-two hours of floating holiday, forty hours of personal.
And so they're, they're both. They both don't roll over. They both, um. I mean, didn't all staff get floating holidays?
No, um, in a way, the floating holidays policy is, it's currently written, it's all regular, full-time and part-time employees. Regular being the key term, so it doesn't include temporary employees.
Okay.
Um. Or our floating, floating staff, there's, there's, you know. Throughout the year, there's probably anywhere from. You know, ten to fifteen staff members that would not be covered by any of our policies right now.
Who would under the?
Who would under this, who will, who will get time off under this policy?
So. Because we have the. Because it front-loads for everybody, all the staff, what does that mean? For somebody who. Is a seasonal worker? So.
It, it load, it front-loads when they get hired.
Yes, so.
For how many hours?
So we would, we would, we're, we're hiring a seasonal worker, a temporary worker, we know how, about, how many hours they're gonna be working for weeks, and for how many weeks? We would do a calculation to figure out how much time to front-load to them.
And then if we decided to extend their contract?
Yeah, so, so something that's not written in this policy is that we're gonna have to audit this. Like, just make sure that we've awarded enough time, and we'll have to add hours later in the year if someone's working. Let's just say we thought somebody would work twenty hours a week, but that twenty-hour employee is actually working twenty-two hours, averaging twenty-two hours a week, well, then we need to add a little bit more time, and we'll add that. Make those adjustments.
What about in the other direction?
Um, we can't go in the other direction, once you're awarded, it's, it's there, and uh, like, so we're gonna, like, we're gonna be doing some math. Um, to figure out what's the appropriate leave amount to award. Well, we've been tracking average hours worked per week for, for years for other, other things like uh, ATA and um. For, for health insurance and for IMRF participation, so, like, we have the data, it's just a matter of auditing it, like, once at work to make sure. We have enough hours.
Do we feel like this is gonna impact our budget at all? Um, is everyone getting another day means more coverage? We even feel like we're getting a bit unsafe with any hiring to, to fill in those gaps?
I don't anticipate any with one, for one day, we, we already grant very generous vacation policies, I mean, our, our current. Our current leave allotment is not, is not gonna be impacted by one, um, one setting, one each a day. And, and these are days that can be used for any reason, health leave can only be used for very specific reasons, like, the health, if you ever need to be sick or something, and your family is. They're sick, they go those ways off. What I anticipate happening is that staff will be using their personal, their personal leave value. First, because they can be used for any reason, and which will save their health leave bounds for when they actually need it when, when they're. Um, I feel it's gonna be, create a little bit of a reserve, um, in my.
So we're gonna have our health leave. Personal leave. I assume we have very many leave.
Well, y- yes, we have, we have a plethora of, of leaves, like, that policy will come in kind of these updates in January, but there's, there's a plethora of. Of these. Um, bounds, like, um. Time off policies where we are giving somebody a balance to use is, is health leave, personal days and vacation days. Breavement is a word, like, it is, is, once you, once the incident happens, then you can use up to five days, um, but that's something that is not.
Obviously not.
Yeah, we, 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 we.
No, no. No, I'm trying, so, the, the, some of my questions come from, um, where I work, we have. Unlimited time off, which sounds lovely, but.
Yeah, in practice, I understand.
Yeah, so thinking about, you know, I had somebody on my team earlier this year who had lots and lots of bereavement. More to HR, it just looks like they vacated for a whole summer, not that they have three separate deaths in the family. So, thinking about like, when we're looking at leave, when we're looking at people, when we're looking at the capacity planning for, you know. I know you said it's only one day, but I'm going, okay, one day intends how many people plus the part-time people who didn't get any vacation, like, does that? Equal any new hires or anything, just making sure that. We've, you know. We've covered all the things where people should have time off, but also that. There's not gonna be undue burden for people who are here, still working.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a valid concern, well, then we can monitor it, I, I. I don't anticipate a, um. Um, I think there are some municipalities that are worried about both granting this time to, to all of our staff, and then taking it all at once. Anyhow, it is. So, um, but, uh, anyway, the, this, that's been our experience.
So, were, did we have to add the eight hours, the five, the, the additional day to meet this?
We, yes, in order to have a paid leave for all worker act compliant policy, you have to be, um, to a max, to, uh, at least forty hours.
Oh, I thought that was the cap.
Yeah, no, um, uh, it, um, the, what they. That's what they're required, huh, how do I say this, um? You're right, it is the cap, it's, it is the most that the law requires, like, would require us to, to, um, provide. If we wanted to give more, because then we couldn't give less.
Oh.
For full-time employees, for employees, for employees who, um. Well, for employees that work forty hours a week. Um. If you do the math on. The award amount is. One hour awarded for every forty hours worked. If you did that for a full-time employee, who works fifty-two weeks a year, they get fifty, they'd be awarded fifty-two hours of, of. Of, um, time off, one hour for every forty hours worked, forty hours. A week for fifty-two weeks, legal fifty-two hours. But the, um, paid leave for all workers act says, the most that they're gonna require us to get is forty, forty hours, so there's a cap.
So the, the forty hours as a cap is what's required, you can go beyond, like.
Yeah, we could, we could, like, go beyond that, I, I'm not recommending that.
Yeah. As I say, we don't, we don't necessarily have to do that because we do have.
We have vacation and health leave, but yeah, the problem with, you know, vacation leave is, again, not for all employees. Um, and, and we don't necessarily limit the reason, but it's for a specific reason why, um. Pay, in order to comply with the paid leave for all workers act, is it have to be allowed to take it for any reason, but no question about it.
There are limitations on vacation.
Um, the idea that you're taking this as time off to be away, uh, away from work, um, not, not, um. Uh, health leave, but if you end up running out of health leave, you could then use vacation, we would do a lot of studies to do it, but. It's for a specific reason, and it doesn't, and it doesn't apply to all, it is, not all staff at all.
Okay, so it's to prioritize wellness and make sure that our people are not using wellness time for sickness time?
Yes, and, and another reason I even know standalone health leave policy, um, is because with IMRF, our employees who are in health leave. Um, uh, IMRF staff, which are remaining health leave, once you retire, can be converted to service credit, to get, get some service credit with our pension plan. And so it's another reason, if you don't have a standalone health plan, you won't be able to do that, and that's a one. That would come to, come to use and appreciate.
And then you, sorry, you said there was something else in conjunction with this that would be revealed in the chapter area?
Oh, so today, we're looking at the adding the personal, personal leave policy and removing the floating holiday language from our holiday policy. But. Governor Pritzker's been busy this year, and we have a number of leave policies to, um. Revise, yeah, revolve, like, just expanded, uh, expanded remand leave for, for, um, uh, for various, for various additional reasons. I forget the other, like, um, victims of economic, the vessel, the, has been expanded, there's a number of leaves that have been expanded, but we'll see that in, in January.
So the reviews that we've done already. The, the foundations of those are solid, we're just gonna be adding.
Just tweaking, just tweaking some language that took to.
Once, once the law is taking effect.
Yeah, we all were definitely wanting to do that.
Oh, no, no, the, the foundation of the policy are great, we're just doing the minor tweak, tweak update, um, with the laws. I, um, would have presented that this month, but I figured, you know, I think it would.
So actually, when we're looking at one and two here, it's the same thing. It's adding.
Yeah, they're related.
Okay.
They're, yeah, they're, yeah, they're, they're, they're tied together, but there are several policies.
Yes, yeah, and so if we're adding personally. Um, then we need to, according to our current plan that complies, we recommend, uh, sunsetting or getting rid of the floating holiday language, like in our holiday. So, if you're adopting the personal leave policy. Also adopting the, uh, updated holiday policy that removes floating holiday language.
Were floating holidays carry over, or?
No, they did not carry over, they, they had to be used.
Yeah, it feels like the only difference is the four to five. Like, for floating holidays, did we even require a true holiday, or like?
No, no, that's, that's the thing, is if you've been treating them kind of like personal days, like, just for any reason, there's our specific reasons that were listed in the policy, but we never held anybody to it. The other thing is that it also creates confusion, so now that we have, having, having a floating holiday policy creates confusion with staff. Because we have thirteen paid holidays now. And those holidays will happen at various days of the week, and when they fall on a day. That staff, the full-time staff numbers are regularly off, let's say, the Christmas Eve is the day, is the day.
Um.
Here, Christmas Eve is on a Sunday, most of our staff are off on Sunday. They get to then float that holiday to a different day, but saying calling it a floating holiday. Is, is troublesome because you have an actual floating holiday.
Um, so this, so they're not, we're not like getting rid of the floating holidays, is that? They will, they will truly be floating holidays for those people?
We'll be able to use that language for.
In lieu of.
And then the personal days will be able to use for any reason, with, like, like how we're treating floating holiday hours right now, yeah.
So it, it's like that.
Yeah, this is, this is, I mean, when I was explaining this, like, this solution to HR colleagues at our libraries and, um, some attorneys that I was talking with, spoken with. Um, they're like, oh, well, that's good, wish I could do that, like, it's, 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 it's easy, we're just swapping that one for another.
Mm-hmm.
Um, rather than having to create. Uh, standalone policy that might apply to only fifteen employees, you know, that, that's what some people argue.
Yeah, it is funny, because libraries are struggling with how they're gonna adopt this and how to get involved with this perfectly, um, so, yeah. The only other thing I would add to is, um, there may be some conversation on how we look at that with our part-time people. Because we have some that are like under twenty, to begin with, somebody twenty and, and. Uh, like, all this time off, but you only hear like fifteen hours to ten hours to eight. That, that may be a conversation, because it doesn't balance out, you, you'd be gone more than you work here, so it's something for us to look at in line. In terms of like, do we put a cap, do we say you have to at least work fifteen, you have to at least work twenty?
Is there anything in the state legislation that? Says, that, that only applies to? Twenty hours a week or fifteen hours a week?
All employees.
Right.
That meaning that, that is, uh, paid leave for all workers act, all, all employees, um. Yeah, but if, if this is forced us then to look at, like, well, we have some employees that are doing great work, and they show up consistently, but they're only working eight hours a week.
They give them twenty hours a week.
Well, 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 we're gonna be adding, adding, adding some personal time, but, but this is a condition, a number of things that we, that, like. Um.
There, there's, there's, so there's some ripple effects and other implications of other areas of how we, of how things are staffing is handled and. Employment is handled that we will have to examine. As this gets implemented.
So it'd be good that we're reviewing the adjacent policies.
So, so Billy and Jocelyn, will this have any implication for the way the library works?
But, I, I think, Virginia kind of hit on that before, and they were, and they're confident that it's, that we're gonna be, that we're gonna be.
Yeah, this is, we, staff members already have, you know, anywhere from. Uh, two to, two to five weeks of vacation time that they get every year, depending on how long they've been here, what status they have, but. And twelve sick days and four floating holidays. And they've already have all that time off, what we're doing is adding one day to those, so if you're just, that's, I don't think it's gonna.
Unless we have. People maxing out all over the place, then.
Yeah, I was thinking about, like, when I first read this, I thought that it had to be accrued, so I was a little concerned about that, but I'm glad to hear that isn't the case. Um, it sounds like that's the policy, like, the law that we're actually being more generous and that it can be front-loaded, is that right?
Yeah, but the law would allow it, a cruel method or, or unloading, you can, you can choose.
Well, I'm glad you're going.
And we just went with what we're already doing, it's just, it's a lot, it's gonna be a lot easier to understand, it's also a lot ea- easier to administer, and it doesn't have to be paid out if somebody leaves, so. Um.
And it's one way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, a quick note too, currently with floating holidays. Floating holiday policy, currently we do pay those out if somebody leaves. So this would be a change, um, the, the personal days, under paid leave for all workers act, are not required to be paid out.
Mm-hmm.
And we won't, um, but under floating holidays, it's kind of like a, a question mark around that, because if we allow them to be taken for any reason, then we treat them like vacation days. And in Illinois, you have to pay out vacation days and something like.
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions, so one is. Um, you said that the, we won't be paying now, obviously, but I, I, again, when I said the other direction, what I meant was. Let's say somebody front-loads. A fair amount, you know, like, all, all the, but then they end up not working the entire time, is there going to be? Are they expected to pay back?
No.
Okay, good.
We can't, we, there's, we're not, we're not, like, once it's awarded and, and, um, used, I mean, this is, I mean, I'll, I'll. So, so, that's like the, um. That's one of the downsides to the employer of doing a front-loaded policy, is like, when you front-load all this vacation time on January one, and the person designed on January two, you pay, you have to pay out all the things you've awarded.
Mm-hmm.
But vacation time. Personally, it doesn't have to be paid out, and health leave won't have to be paid out, but that's one of the. Um, downsides to the employer of front-loading is that once you make it available, it can be used, and there's nothing to be.
Okay, good. Um, and the other thing is, I've actually sort of a request for when we see the. Um, see the other leave policies, I'm curious, uh, something that Virginia mentioned, you said that in your workplace, they have unlimited. And of course, I think historically, people don't end up taking a, a lot, and I, that just made me think about how. How much. Uh, employees staff at, at this library actually use up, like, if there is. A culture of not using as much, and I was wondering, I can't imagine that you have that information in front of you right now, but if we could see that. When we see those leave policies too, because it would. Uh, to my mind, it would help me try and think about how effective these, these policies are.
Hmm, yeah, the, like, how much has been used, like, perhaps over the last year?
Yeah, sure.
Or balances remaining, it is, yeah, one click report, I can, yeah.
Yeah, like, how much is used as a ratio to how much was.
Offer, yeah, how much people are entitled to. And how much they actually take.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Awarded, taken, remaining balance will carry over, yeah, that's, yeah, I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Our staff user.
Okay, good, good. That's good, that's very, that's very, very good.
And, and we also, we're speaking to that point, that's another reason why I thought it's important to, um, like, for a breavement leave policy. A breavement leave policy, um. Yeah, we actually would allow a person to take as much time as they needed to be, to be off, but we thought it was important to, um. Uh, to be more explicit about, like, we will pay you for five days off, in, in a state allows you to take up to ten, um, but, like. Um, but, you know, of course, you could take the time off that you need and just substitute other paid time off. Uh, and, like, sometimes it helps, it's helpful to give, like, a number that, like, like, take these five days, this is what we guarantee to you, rather than thinking that they can only take one or two.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
And how would this, like, I have, you know, parental leave on the brain, so I was thinking about how this might benefit people that are going on. Parental leave more than a floating holiday policy, can, is, can you speak to that, maybe?
We have a paid monthly policy, our paid monthly policy allows for eight weeks of paid leave, um. Uh, separate from their, um, health leave time, the personal days, and vacation time that you could. Um, often, we can see a person, we see a, a person easily can take, um, you know, eight to twelve weeks off, all paid, or eight, eight weeks, obviously.
But I guess I'm thinking, like, this could tag on to that, right, as like.
Oh, yeah, any, any reason, there's no limitation.
It's just a tag on to any, yeah, I mean, that causes a leave.
And this would probably sound like FMLA, if someone's going to go on it, would need to be zeroed out prior to.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're one thing, right, yeah, FMLA guarantees you, you know, um, your, your, your job, but, um, how do you get paid for it?
Exactly, this is how you would, this, you can use this for FMLA, so the parental leave question, that would be, that would be the, part of the answer.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Well, FMLA is just the guarantee of the job, so I guess that's making sure that we're, yeah, like, it sounds like we have eight weeks of paid leave, and then also the health, whatever their balance is. And then also these five days, so that's really great.
Their vacation time, which, I mean, I, I mean. Yeah, but there, there's a balance that can be, to be accessed beyond eight weeks.
Mm-hmm.
More for first child, second child, third child, fourth child?
That is great, how we do parental leave in the country.
Or how we don't do it.
Yeah.
All right, uh, if there's no further questions, given that they are tied together in this, uh, I would ask for a motion to.
Oh, I have one quick edit, you guys said, in the policy, it says that we approved it already.
Yeah, I, I, um, as we, we didn't update it. Uh, my.
You just thought we would.
Yeah, 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 when you were pointing, yeah, and then we're pointing to me, so.
Mm-hmm.
We just grabbed these.
It will be, it will be, uh.
I've, I've actually.
The days, the days will be more reflect when we actually approve it.
Correct, but, but, I've actually already made that change in our, our.
Okay, is, is there, I would ask for a motion to approve both the personal leave and the revised holiday policy. So moved.
Second.
Ted and Virginia, any further discussion, hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay, any objections, it is approved. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thanks, David, thank you, thank you, turn all the questions.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we now have our EV charging policy.
On that, um, I'm so excited for the talk of that, we're actually, um, are working on installing EV chargers in the garage. And so.
Those are breakovers.
Um, there's a cost to that, um, there, you know, there's some rules around it, the policy, so I would ask the master, dumb into that.
So, policy in front of the board, that's not Billy. So, yeah, in front of you to look at tonight, uh, is the, uh, proposed EV charging policy, um, we've been working with, uh, Verde Energy Efficiency Experts, who's been. The energy engineers that have been, uh, behind the LED upgrades and our future efficiency, uh. Uh, initiatives going forward, um, they are doing the EV charging itself. Started yesterday, um, it's gonna be great, we will have. Two charging stations, uh, with the ability to expand, we'll have electrical service to expand for more in the future, as need is determined. Um, but with that comes the need for a policy, so, working with Verde and, uh, some of the other libraries that they've done this work at prior. Uh, largely, Burnin' Area Library, um. As an overall, yeah. Burnin' Area Library, uh, we present the EV, uh, charging policy. It's very straightforward, it sets the, uh, expectations for staff and public, and. Yeah, the, your questions or comments?
Only thing I would add to is, we also have potential, um, as we think about our fleet too, um, when we wanna go electric, it'll be a place where we can. Also charge our vehicle, um, you know, we just went to the Planet Green, so we're also thinking about that down the line too, of having. You know, um, using one of the spaces potentially also for our vehicles, but we don't have that yet, but it's just something else to keep in mind. But it also ties into revenue generating too, it's not gonna generate a ton of money, but, you know, we talked about that as we passed the board. In looking at all, you know, avenues that we could do that, so.
That was gonna be my question, is what, what are we charging, is it on par with? What other EV charging stations are charging around Oak Park?
So, those are conversations I've had, uh, so the village is free, so the village will park, their charging stations are free. Um, talking with the park district, they just installed, I think it's their first.
I would like, so, like, like full of votes?
You, yes.
Five thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, sorry, um, I believe the park district has settled on twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour as a rate that they're charging. Um, for, uh. Their patron, their, their. Public to use their station, and other libraries are between the twenty to thirty cent range, so, um. There is a fee that comes, a license fee for the software, so we need to make sure that we hit that as a, as a break-even point, and then generate revenue.
What's, what's the fee?
Uh, two hundred, uh, two hundred dollars a year per device. Uh, we have a three-year service agreement that knock ten percent off, so it's a hundred and eighty dollars per year per device. So, three hundred and sixty dollars per year total, to be extra confusing.
Thank you for doing the last point, that is not my.
So, so Matt, one of the, one of the problems with these, these charging stations is that somebody parks there for more than. An hour or two hours. And then you just say, no, this is not your parking place, this is where you're charged.
Sure.
What do we do with that?
So, through, uh, the software with EV match, um, there are ways to set up, uh, notifications to your, to your. Personal device or your phone to tell you, your, your charging time has ended, uh, we can cut off service. Um, and stop charging, that doesn't guarantee anyone leaves, what we can also do, uh, is after your. Charging duration, and after your grace period to come and remove the vehicle, then we can assess additional fees. Charging duration and after your grace period to come and remove the vehicle, then we can assess additional fees. To as you sit there, um you're you're doing a disservice to people who have additional EVs that wanna charge, but we can generate revenue. Off of people not compliant, or as in the policy, should we so choose, we we can have the the vehicle towed. At our own expense.
And that happens without the electric too, people using this as their personal parking space, cause then they're also gonna get hit with. The the. Well, the ticket when you come out, like if you stay overnight or you stay like the maximum time, so that also builds in some kind of controls too, because. You also, you know, we close at nine, so this garage closes, so if you stay, you're gonna get hit there and you're gonna get hit out, so hopefully that'll be deterred, because. That happens without the electric piece too sometimes.
So as somebody who has occasionally forgotten where she can put her car. Have we decided we will maybe say, make an announcement, hey, car with license plate, whatever, whatever, whatever. Do we have internal policy before we tow it on?
Well, it sounds like there's like there there's an app that needs to be used in conjunction with this that will notify, correct?
But I ignore that thing all the time.
But what happens if the person leaves the building?
Um to me.
Like the people, there's people who park it here who don't stay in the building.
And we do have to do those announcements, or they block the entire thing.
I know, I've I've been one of the people who's like, uh, there's a car downstairs and here's the license plate, so I know it's gonna happen. Um when are we expecting this to kick in?
So the uh installation uh should finish Friday, so the hardware will be mounted. Uh after that, the next steps are configuring the devices to the network. Getting them connected to the payment portal, the 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 third-party vendor, um and then once all of that is established, we um. Really surprised, we 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 have to uh get Linda involved to receive payment. Once all that's established, then we configure the software for how we determine how to use it. Uh charging durations, all the configuration that goes in the backend, so um I'm hoping um by the end of January. This will be, this will be live.
So the reason I was asking was if, you know, if we're not expecting it to kick in until end of January. Maybe we wait in, not on the policy, but maybe before we worry about all the ways that it could be exploited. We wait and see how it actually gets used, you know, for for a little bit, and if there's not a. If there's not a problem.
Well, that's the thing, like that, like with that, the announcement piece, all that, that's a, that's in like. Practice, that's a procedure of practice, that's staff determines how to, how to address, you know, notification.
Yeah.
Of that, that's, I that's, you know, we don't need that, it doesn't need to be a support policy.
Yeah.
And to that point, Matt, I've been here a little over a year now, you've never. We've had a number of parking situations, but we haven't needed to call a tow truck, that is not. And and in talking to people who've been on staff much longer than I have, I don't know that anybody can. Work like the time that we've had call a tow truck, um so we're putting it in there as a. Just to cover our end, um as something we can do, but Virginia, to your point, I wouldn't, I I'm not a vehicle driver. I wouldn't, I wouldn't look to to tow vehicles.
I have a question about um the language that says uh. The parking, the EV charging stalls must be actively charging, is that clear what that means? Because to tonight's point, like if it's plugged in and it's past being charged. That's like.
Matt mentioned a grace period after. Well, I think that that. I might start guessing that it implies that it's plugged in and not just an electric car sitting in it in the spot, just. Yeah, then you you've gone through the process of of reserving your 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 charging window and are actively charging. Completing the process of charging your vehicle for the duration of your your. Charging reservation, I have a. You're using it as a charging spot and not as a parking spot, thank you.
So most of the people who would be using this would probably be staff people rather than patrons, do you think?
I think it's a good question, I don't know. It's it's whomever's willing to pay for the charging.
I feel like we're centrally located enough that if somebody knows it's there. They may opt to park there and then go spend time at Scoville or go, you know, shop at Chappelle's or whatever.
Well, I think it's, I think the question is, it's like, we're not gonna, there, we're not gonna. Part, nothing in this is prioritizing anyone's use, you know, whether it's staff or the public. And it's it's first come, first served, I think it's the language that's in here.
Function, then we have a electric rate and. I mean, that's way on the road, but I'll just get it.
Against our new library vehicle will be electric, right?
Talking about that, so I I don't know, I, you know, it's because like to your point, I think what you. I think what you're asking is like, they have to charge, they have to pay, so I don't know how it would all play out, but. Um to what we've said before is there's staff use, there's people who have cars now, so we anticipated. And I'm sure there's something workable, where if you have the code or something, so we're not paying.
Um yeah, so to that point, in the software configuration, we we can. Charge a library vehicle free of charge.
So the answer is we can program it, so let me charge a free charge.
Prior, no, that's not a priority. Well, we'd be able to charge when the library is not open, so I would think that we would prioritize if we can.
So we actually talked about that, so thank you, we we talked about that, we. We did say that, like, after nine, we can plug it in, so people can use it versus less taking up space.
Maybe it's been bringing the students off, or we'd plan to bring people that, you know, light post. Charging stations for people who live in multiple unit apartments, but they don't have a garage, they don't have a charging station. And so we're trying to figure out, okay. So you're parked on the street, you use a a light post. And they're all working, it's all software.
Yeah.
So.
It will all be. Are there any concerns about? The policy language itself?
Yeah, I I have a a question about the fees, because you know, we're talking about how the. Spot is not a parking spot, but of course, to get into the garage. You get the ticket, and so you are paying. More on parking spots. Does that make sense, so that? If you're.
More or less than than they have the charging spots in the in in other garages. In other places.
So if I could finish my question, those, no, that's okay, so um so. The most, my question was going to be, you said that the village is free, but that the park district charges twenty-five cents and otherwise reads or whatever. Um and I was wondering the places that the park district is charging, if there's also a fee for. Access to the actual.
You don't wanna say it again?
Because, yeah, because I think that that otherwise might be. Compounding, and I also know that we have like three, what is it, an hour more?
Two hours.
Two hours, right, so.
How we use is a little different to your point, and then. Uh like the village also charges lots of fees for everything, and we basically charge for nothing.
Right.
And so I feel like that balances out when I'm thinking about it too, and we we talked about it too, because me and Matt said, well, the village is free. Which our approach be, I don't think we have to match it, our, the other thing we thought about too is like our parking doesn't match exactly what they charge. Like you were saying, we do two hours free, our fees are a little bit lower than theirs, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's it it kind of balances out, and I think it goes back to what Virginia was talking about too. Like you'll use it for convenience, so you might know it's free, but you might be right on Lake Street. And I don't know, wanna go to the Little Mottis, you might wanna go to like get a taco or something, and I wanna actually go to the library also. So you'll, okay, you'll say, okay, thirty cents, I can charge, so I don't know, we'll just have to see how it plays out.
We'll also have to see like how many people, because we do have that initial two-hour spree. How many people are finished with their charging within that two hours?
Yeah.
And so they're not actually, it's not actually compounding because they're pretty much finished in that time, if it starts being like. No, people are hanging out here for three, four, six hours, then I think we start getting into the policy range of like. You can't park your car here and charge for two hours and then like. You go have a five-hour dinner.
No, but you could spend like seven hours in the library very easily, you wanted.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And the idea is that you would. Be expected to move your car?
I think the expectation would be, so, but I mean, that might be a personal choice too, like. Today is the day I plan to spend ten hours at the library.
Sometimes you don't plan to.
Hence the ding on your phone telling you to.
Yeah, um I don't know.
Put out of the garage either, we're just saying.
Oh, yeah, I I think we'll have to see, you know, when we get that information back, like how many people are finished charging within that two hours? To make sure that they're not compounding, or see what the margin is of people who are being pulled from the park.
Right, and.
Where will this policy um be communicated in the public? In what way, like?
Well, we usually.
Or is it just the website or?
We usually do have them on the website, um there's room to have some stuff down in the garage, I think, we don't have to talk about that. Um you maybe like even at the parking space, or I can even envision like as you walk up. To the elevator, um there's some space there, we have little buglets.
Are we able to integrate this into the app where they'll be paying like a? I mean, you're not going to read it, but check this and that you read.
I accept.
Yeah.
I don't know, does that?
It's uh consent to use, um I can check with EV match.
Okay.
Yeah. Send this to anyone who signs up, I mean, and maybe not in the app, but if like if we get their email address that. Sure. Did that, that this goes to them.
I have to think there's a whole bunch of other boilerplate faculty cook that's going if we're getting on credit card numbers and whatever else since.
Thirty cents an hour, thirty cents.
And so we're also getting a big state subsidy for having an EV charger?
I wouldn't say big. I wouldn't say big, um there there are. Sure, sure. Okay. Um is there a motion to approve the EV charging policy? So moved. Suzanne?
I'm uh getting some pics.
You were not ready for that. They're like that.
Is it like a EV charge?
So Suzanne, Suzanne moved, is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. Alright, we. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, um. Is there a motion to enter closed session?
So moved.
By Virginia's third second.
Second.
Say that by Maya, uh this requires a roll call vote, uh will the secretary just take the?
Um, just leave and really.
Yeah.
Yes.
See, it's when I can't read them down, I start getting kind of brain glitches, I know.
I know.
Yes.
Jeffrey Rogers.
Yeah.
And then trustee Fairfax, yes.
Will be entered closed session, uh.